Good, glad to hear it.
Well, and that's where I'm at. I just feel like, what am I this?
Oh, wouldn't that be a nice day?
It's a proclamation.
Okay.
Yep.
So you either stay with him or?
I get to.
Or you have an Austin Bridge front.
Okay. Got thirty seconds.
We'll bring this meeting to order and ask that you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to the city council meeting of March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will now proceed with item number three, which is the public input portion. And I will call on Zach Vogel. Come on up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Zach Vogel. I'm a teacher at Linsburg, Smoky Valley High School. I do the vision tag technology and I'm coming up here to introduce Kyler Crane tonight. Kyler's gonna talk about a project he's working on in my class. He's trying to get a grant about lighting the bridge down by the pool. So just want to highlight some things. He's not an average junior that's coming up here presenting this. Like he's trying to write a professional grant and get the funding for that. He's completed several projects. He's an outstanding leader in the classroom. If you remember from about a year and a half ago, the light show on Cherry Street, the custom light show that went to music, if you went by, you can put your radio to it, has a custom music or custom Christmas lights to the music. He also did the same or another light project down at the Hundred Trailworth of town. Had that all sunk out for that event as well. So he's done lots of electronic engineering projects like that. So I want to introduce him and say that USC four hundred, Austin supports what he's doing and just take it from there. So here's Kyler.
Kyler, if you want to come on up, this is Kyler Crane.
Kyler Crane. Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Kyler Crane. I'm a junior here at Smoky Valley High School. I've been doing electrical engineering and that's kind of my hobby. I've been doing that for about the past seven years. My plan is to go to college for electrical engineering, so that's kind of what I'm looking at. But I'm here to talk to you tonight about replacing the existing lights on the Valcom Bridge with a new computer-controlled system. And so I have some highlights about that that I'd like to share with you and I'll start here. One of them being that these new LED lights would be more energy efficient. I talked to Rod, forgive me, Anthony Schrag.
Schrag.
Schrag. He said that the old lights were using about six thousand watts of power. These new lights would be only about fifteen hundred watts, which is about four times more efficient. These new LED color-changing lights can be different for each holiday. So instead of just having the white lights for Christmas for the two months that they're lit up, you can have them lit up year-round for different colors for different holidays and things like that. And so we can have the bridge lit up more year-round. These are computer-controlled lights, which are cool because they can be automatically controlled on and off. You can automatically change the colors for different holidays, so you can have different color palettes that kind of light up the bridge. That's all automatically controlled from the computer. And what's cool about it too is that you can change the lights from City Hall being computer-controlled. And so Holly here could sit in her office and control those lights depending on the holiday or if there's any special events coming up or things like that that you might want to light the bridge up for different things like that. Another issue, I know we had issues with this year was vandalism. With these new LED lights, they actually sit inside of an aluminum channel that would be mounted onto the bridge. And that aluminum channel provides some diffusing of the light, so it's not, they look prettier than just dots, if that makes sense. It's not just a strip of kind of dots. It's more like a bar of lights, a little diffuse. But there's no glass, so there's nothing to break. There's nothing to take off. You can't just remove lights by unscrewing it. So it's safer in that that you don't have broken glass on the bridge. Talking about Carmen Onquist, he said they also had some issues with people just stealing extension cords that were pretty easy to get a hold of. With this new system, all of that would kind of be protected within the bridge. The wiring is down low, so it's out of reach, but it's also going to be easy repair, be an easy wiring. And then the lighting controller would actually be mounted on the utility pole. And the thinking behind that is that if it's on the utility pole, it looks utility and it'd be less likely for people to mess with it. Another positive thing about this is that it's easy maintenance. And so you don't have a lot of maintenance with these lights. There's not light bulbs to replace and things like that. These lights, they actually come in sixteen-foot reels with plugs on either end, so it's super easy. If a strip goes bad or something like that, then it's super easy to unplug the old one and plug in a new one. And these lights, they also have a backup data channel built into them so that if one light were to go out, which you wouldn't notice one light on the entire bridge, you wouldn't notice one light going out. But even if it did, the rest of the bridge is still functioning fine. Once it's set up, like I said, it's all automatically controlled, so there's not, once it's set up, there's not a lot to control after that. And another thing that I was thinking of is that I think it'd be nice to have kind of a nightlight, if that's what you want to call it, or like a security light that kind of lights up the bridge. And with these lights being computer-controlled, you can set them lights to like a real low brightness, white light. And you also don't have to have the entire bridge lit up at one time. And so if you imagine where the lights are now, they're kind of at the top and also on the handrails. So if you wanted like a nightlight, a security light, you could have just the handrails lit up and that would be on a real low brightness white light. And I think that would be nice, just to kind of light it up. And also, I know Carmen Onquist, CD, every year has to go through and replace each bulb or replace the bulbs that are burnt out. And talking to him, he said he goes out there every other day to replace burnt out or more commonly broken bulbs. With these new lights that are protected in that aluminum channel, there's just less likely of a chance that these lights get broken. The estimated lifespan of these lights, we're looking at about ten years. The limiting factor kind of being the computer that would be out there actually controlling the lights. Computers usually are replaced after ten years. Just something to note, no plans for flashing lights, but rather more smooth, kind of flowing, transitioning lights, not jumping out, actually kind of just more flowing. And lastly, I think the ownership would be, this project would be going through the school, or that way I could do it. But then after that, the ownership would be given to the city and then they would be the ones to maintain it. And maintenance is really easy, like I said. And lastly, the budget, we're looking at about thirteen thousand dollars right now to redo the whole thing. And that sounds like a lot, but maintenance isn't going to be a whole lot after that. We're looking at the NUT grants for about ten thousand and then we're also looking at the McPherson County Community Foundation for the remainder of the money. So you have any questions?
Thank you, Kyler. Any questions for Kyler?
You also might want to look at the Smoky Valley Community Foundation, which is actually through Salina, but that's the Linsburg one rather than the McPherson one. I mean, you might be able to hit all of them. I'm not sure.
Any further questions, Kyler?
And how do you already apply for those grants then?
We're working on it now.
Well, I think it's great.
I'm excited for it.
Awesome.
Very excited.
When you say that you're a junior in high school and have been electrical engineering things for six or seven years, that's impressive.
Do these use integrated drivers in each reel or do you have a separate like driver system for it? That's a term.
So the LEDs are actually controlled from a controller and this controller is made by a company and it's a pretty common controller. But that controller is what actually takes the signal in from the computer and then sends that out to the LEDs. And then each LED kind of is told what to do by that main controller board. And so it's all addressed through that. And then lastly, we're asking for your permission to do it, of course, the bridge is owned by both the county and, or McPherson County and Linsburg. And so then the next question I have for you guys is how to proceed with that.
Okay. Do you want to answer that?
One, two, yes, please.
So because it's a shared agreement for the maintenance of the bridge, Kyler just needs to know if he has council's general support. During public input, you wouldn't take any action. But if he has your general support for moving forward with the project, he would get more details put together and come back with a formal ask at a future meeting as an agenda item. Love to see that. Yeah, like it's great.
Right point.
Okay. Thank you, Kyler, for being here and you can kind of proceed and we'll look for the hearing from you again. Thank you, Zach and Holly for your.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, council, item number four. Are there any amendments to the agenda seating?
There are.
Okay, we see no amendments. Thank you. I'll draw your attention to item number five, the mayor's report. And this evening, we have some very important guests with us as we look to the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum and the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. And so we are excited that we have some guests here today and I'm going to recognize Lenora Linham and have her come up, the executive director. Come on up, Lenora.
Thank you. As Clark said, we are celebrating the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Link of the Flower Mill, which was built in eighteen ninety-eight. And so I would like to recognize my staff, Adam Croft and Caroline. And then also board members that are here, Kirsten Bruce and Rachel Norwood. So we're looking forward to a happy last year. We've got Millfest coming up on May sixth. And so we'll have some special things going on through the year. We've got an anniversary committee in place that's planning some things. So Adam has put a lot of work into the proclamation, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lenora. And thank all of you for being here this evening. We have a declaration recognizing the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Smoky Valley Roller Mills. And I'll read that. Whereas Smoky Valley Roller Mills served as a vital agriculture and commercial hub to Linsburg and surrounding region from eighteen ninety-eight through nineteen fifty-five under the ownership of Theodore Tinkgraber, then the Hagstrom and Runbeck families. And whereas the historic building and original equipment were restored and preserved in the nineteen sixties, seventies and eighties because of the efforts of numerous volunteers in the Smoky Valley community and in particular, the leadership and supervision of Malcolm Esping, Mary Borg and George Tisserac. And whereas, because of these community efforts, Smoky Valley Roller Mills is preserved in working condition today under the ownership of the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum and continues to provide great value to the Smoky Valley community as a historical treasure, community cultural center and a beautiful marvel of engineering and ingenuity. Whereas Smoky Valley Roller Mills has been named on the National Register of Historic Places for half a century. And whereas the museum board of directors, staff, volunteers and many members of the Smoky Valley community are now working diligently to secure the future of these historic buildings for future generations to enjoy. And whereas the year two thousand and twenty-three marks the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary since Smoky Valley Roller Mills was rebuilt anew in eighteen ninety-eight following a fire the previous year. And special celebrations of the significant milestone, including the full mill running again, are planned for the museum's annual Millfest celebration on the first Saturday of May, two thousand and twenty-three, which is May the sixth. Now therefore, on behalf of the Linsburg City Council, I'm Mayor Clark Schultz, Mayor of the City of Linsburg, call upon all Smoky Valley residents, all supporters of the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum and the Smoky Valley Roller Mills and all Kansas citizens who care about local history and culture to celebrate the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the historic treasure of Smoky Valley Roller Mills in two thousand and twenty-three and in particular during Millfest on Saturday, May sixth. To learn more about the history and tradition of agriculture, industry and Swedish culture in Linsburg, the Smoky Valley and all of Kansas, and to consider ways to personally support the continued preservation of the Smoky Valley Roller Mills and growth of the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum. Furthermore, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-three is hereby proclaimed as Linsburg Smoky Valley Roller Mills hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary day, proclaimed this day. Thank you. And we will look for a motion to accept this.
Sound off.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Lenora, and all of your staff and board that are here this evening. Appreciate it. And we have all noticed the wonderful things that are happening there.
We were wondering if you would like to have a picture with the staff and the board members that are here before they.
Absolutely.
If you would like to come forward, we'll have a.
Do you, council or anybody you want?
What?
I'd say your vision.
Lenora?
Should we go up here?
Yeah. With the seal.
Yeah, we need the seal to make sure it's official out there. Thank you all. As you all have noticed, they've got the right team and are doing great things down in this wonderful city. Council, we will now turn our attention to item number six, the consent agenda. There are three items this evening. Item A is the approval of the minutes from the March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. Item B, payroll ordinance, number five, four, one, seven. And item C, purchase order ordinance, number five, four, one, eight. These items are routine and enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. Is there a motion to move the consent agenda?
Sound off.
Second.
If a motion is second, any questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will have our city clerk, call roll, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Handaway.
Yes.
Gallant.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. Turn our attention to item number seven, appointments. Ask our administrator if we have any appointments this evening.
We do.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number eight, committee reports. Item A is planning a commission and we will call on Jordan Irkovich, our community development director. Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor, good evening, council. Okay, so this goes back to, this goes back to the planning commission meeting on February twenty-eighth. As you remember, planning commission voted six oh unanimously to recommend a rezone of three seventeen South First Street from I two heavy industrial district to R one single family dwelling district. We've been in a holding period, the fourteen-day protest period in that time. Nobody has stepped forward for public comment. There were also no public comments before that meeting or at that meeting. The rezone will allow property owners Krista and Kelly Dower to utilize the property to build primary residence. And the land is currently vacant. So just for clarity, this is the property that's next to, that's next to the electric utility.
Substation.
Yeah, the substation. Again, there have been no public comments or objections since the planning commission voted on February twenty-eight. So the recommendation is a motion to group ordinance five, four, one, nine, amending section fifty dash seventy of the Linsburg Municipal Code relating to zoning district boundaries within the city of Linsburg, Kansas.
Are there questions for Jordan? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Jordan. Council, you have a recommendation to approve ordinance five, four, one, nine. Is there a motion to that effect?
Sound off. Second then.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions. We'll have our clerk, city clerk, call roll, please.
Councilmembers Gallant.
Yes.
Handaway.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes. Okay, we will now turn our attention to item number nine and ask our administrator, we're in the old business.
We do.
Thank you. I'll turn your attention to item number ten, new business. Item A, KDOT cost share program. I will call on Chris Lindholm, our public works director. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Coming for you this evening with another KDOT application for a grant. This is with KDOT's cost share program, which is designed specifically to address items within the community that are not connected to the state highway like the Seacliff program was. This is basically for street replacement, sidewalk replacement, street lighting improvements, those type of things. It's a pretty broad range of items that can be addressed with this. So that's why I'm hopeful that our application will need some positive input from them. I've had communications with the cost share director and she felt that that was a good application and could do what we're wanting to. There are a lot of applications that come into the cost share program, so we'll have to see how it goes. But I think, as I've thought over the last couple of years, ways to try and do some different projects, we tend to focus in on smaller areas and tend to not get, we get those smaller areas done, but not the broader maintenance issues. So the hope with this is that we can do almost all of the asphalt and chip sealed streets and do a mastic sealed chip, crack sealed, and then a chip sealed fog sealed coating on top of it. That's what was done over on the southwest part of town, Linsburg Street, in that area, Grant Street. It's not by any means a fix to the streets, but it can hopefully catch us up on the maintenance items that we just continually fall behind because we get, the budget gets eaten up by various projects. So all we're looking for this evening is just a motion to approve the application for the KDOT cost share program for funding assistance with the maintenance of city streets.
Thank you, Chris. Are there questions for Chris? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Council, you have heard a recommendation for a motion to approve application to KDOT cost sharing program for planning to assist with the maintenance of city streets. Is there a motion?
Sound off. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Seeing no questions. Can we?
There's no expenditure.
Yeah, there's no expenditure. You wouldn't either.
Great. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes do have it. Thank you, council. And thank you, Chris, for doing that. I also want to just take a second to thank citizens that who have letters in support, Jim Prue, Jim and Kathy Richardson and Elena Nichols and Dave Schrock. We appreciate.
Chris Erickson.
Chris Erickson.
Chris Erickson.
From Bethany Villages.
I apparently do not have that in front of me.
I actually did get two more in this last week as well that will be submitted with the application.
Well, we appreciate that and it's, that's an important part and it shows that our citizens are engaged and we appreciate that. Okay, we will now move to item E, Public Safety Center renovation. No call on our chief. Please, Michael Davis.
Evening again. I'm here to go over the design agreement. One of the objectives of the city's strategic plan is to provide a safe and healthy community with a goal of providing public safety services for all that maintain standard of excellence. Linsburg Public Safety Center on Lincoln Street was built in nineteen eighty-seven and no modernizing or large-scale improvements have been made since that time. In spring of two thousand and twenty-two, I came together with Christie and other staff members to identify a need to improve both the interior and the exterior areas of the Public Safety Center. Proposals were solicited from four different firms, but only Hutton was the one that responded. At the June sixth regular meeting, city council approved Hutton to complete the space needs analysis, renderings and budgets for the project. Since that time, public safety and administrative staff have met regularly with Hutton to develop, design, come up with anticipated budgets, a timeline for the project. The timeline is as follows. From now until April, if we issue the apartment agreement and finalize it at the vote of this meeting, we'll then kick off with the design and engineering. May and June, we'll show the finalized drawings for permitting and bidding. Mid-July to mid-August, complete the bidding and permitting process and confirm all construction schedule details. August twenty-ninth, the GMP or the Guaranteed Maximum Pricing established for city council will be ready by September fifth budget hearing. At September fourth, present and approve the GMP and Part Two agreement. And then mid-October to the first or mid-November, we'll finalize move-out, we'll set up temporary spaces. And then November will be the anticipated start of the project with March being the anticipated completion of the project. After much deliberation and several iterations of the design and features, staff and Hutton have landed on a final plan and a budget for the project. Attached for the city council's consideration is the apartment agreement, which is the design fees and engineering to secure Hutton for the project and start the process in order to achieve the above timeline. With that, I'm asking for a motion to approve the apartment agreement with Hutton at a cost of forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars to commence Public Safety Center renovation project. And I do have Josh from Hutton here to answer any technical details of the agreement.
Thank you, chief. Are there questions for our chief of police? Do we have any technical questions? So we would like Josh to come up and talk. Okay, thank you, chief. Thank you very much. Council, you have a recommendation in front of you to, or a motion to approve the Part One agreement with Hutton at a cost of forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars to commence the Public Safety Center renovation project. Is there a motion?
Sound off.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion?
Actually, do you have one question on the business level? So there was two hundred thousand dollars in the two thousand and twenty-three budget and that was intended for the overall project or?
That was intended for the first half of the.
That was intended for the first half of the interior renovation.
Okay, but, but, okay, and then what, but we've kind of switched gears on how we're doing it. So we will, the forty one thousand for the design phase.
Comes out of that.
Comes out of that, and then the rest will be rolled into the remainder of the project as part of the twenty twenty four budget? At the, at the not to exceed.
Yeah, so this forty one thousand one hundred is part of the initial two hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted. And then, um, we, we have already accounted for, but not officially because it's next fiscal year, but have the rest of the budget, um, for the project in the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget.
But, uh, so the takeaway though is there's basically not two halves anymore. There's the dispersed expenditure that gets the bid process going, and then the rest of it will be all in one thing in twenty twenty four's budget.
Well, kind of, because it's spread over two fiscal years. So part of the expenditure is in twenty twenty three that council has already approved. It'll be one continuous project and one continuous budget that it'll cross over two fiscal years.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you, any further questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, uh, you've heard the, uh, the motion. Now, how our, uh, city clerk, call roll, please.
Council members Bruce.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Gallant.
Yes.
Sanderwick.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, council, thank you, Roxy.
Yes.
Now move to item C, bike share program. And I will call on Jordan Irkovich, our community development director.
All right, good evening again. So I'm here to present the Linsburg Bike Share Program to you. This will be, uh, first time, hopefully you've been maybe following along in the Friday reports. Uh, but this one is pretty exciting, I think. So city staff have been in advanced discussions with OCCK about bringing the Bike Share Program to Linsburg. For those of you who don't know, OCCK stands for the Occupational Center of Central Kansas. And what they do is they work with short term and long term disability support services for kids and adults. So transportation, job training, et cetera. Uh, so anyway, okay, the Linsburg Bike Share Program would follow the examples of other successful Can Cycle communities, including Ellsworth, Concordia, Bellevue, Bellevue, Salina, and others. So importantly, Can Cycle is a program that OCCK put together. They own that Can Cycle brand, and so this is them facilitating, uh, that program. Uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield Kansas is the primary financial sponsor of the program, covering eighty percent of the cost. And OCCK is the primary beneficiary of the generated funds. So for anybody who pays for, um, to use these bikes, um, those funds go to benefit OCCK and all the disability services that they run. Movatic is the company responsible for building and maintaining the Bike Share Program and its associated app. We'll get more into that later. So the Linsburg Bike Share Program would promote community health and well-being, active transportation, bike tourism, and Swedish heritage. Additionally, because the bike's location will be tracked, the data supplied by riders will contribute essential information for future grant applications to the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. The value of this data in terms of potential grant monies for transportation infrastructure improvement is immense. So all of you are potentially following our Safe Streets and Roads for All bootcamp. Right now, that's a five billion dollar, uh, five year discretionary grant program through the U.S. Department of Transportation. They have to give forty percent of that money to rural communities. And they're right now kind of struggling to get rural communities to get the application together for a federal grant to apply. And so what this means is, is that this is, this is good money to go after. And having this kind of data to support our application could be incredibly helpful. Okay, so the Linsburg Bike Share Program will include three stations, uh, one on the north of town near Bethany College by Dopman Trail. In the central location downtown by City Hall, you just ran out in the parking lot. And south, in the south side of town, next to the new Frederson Family Fitness Park. And I've attached a map that you will have seen. The program will include fifteen bikes across three locations. Uh, so the fifteen, there's fifteen bikes, but there's eight spots, so you can move them around. It's not fifteen bikes for fifteen spots, uh, fifteen for twenty four. The bikes will be for rent either by the hour or with a thirty dollar annual pass, uh, which is discounted, uh, for students of Bethany to twenty dollars per year. And anyone will be able to rent the bikes easily through the Movatic smartphone app. So if you were able to click on that link, you'll see this is, this is pretty standard. What you do is you download the app, you scan the bike, it unlocks. And once you put it back, uh, the bike stops renting. That's kind of how it works. And so one of the reasons why that's kind of beneficial for Bike Share Program, uh, having station based programs as opposed to floating, like you might see the bird scooters, for example, is that they require people to put them back or they keep getting charged, so you didn't get a lot of litter on the street or on the sidewalk, that kind of thing. Additionally, sponsoring organizations will be able to utilize free membership for their staff and students. By the way, their organizations email for the first year of the program. So for example, because Bethany College has already committed to sponsoring this program, all Bethany students, staff, and faculty will be able to use the bikes free of charge for the first twelve months. Because many college students are without transportation, the Bike Share Program would hopefully increase their ability to move throughout town and on the trail more easily for work, retail, and recreation. So we always talk about connecting Bethany to downtown and to the rest of the community. Um, I know anecdotally, many students have come to me saying, uh, that they either don't have cars or can't afford to put gas in their cars and say they like bikes. And so this is an opportunity to get them downtown and also to the rest of the community as well and to utilize the trail. ARPA funds came to the city, uh, via a public health crisis. The Linsburg Bike Share Program is a public health initiative with additional benefits of improved accessibility, tourism, economic development, and the promotion of Linsburg's Swedish heritage, all of which are comprehensive initiatives. The city, the, the city's share of the program in twenty twenty three would be covered entirely by ARPA funds. Anything moving forward could be covered, uh, through the budget or through grants, likely through grants. So today, there's a recommendation, uh, it's a motion to approve the expenditure of ARPA funds for the Linsburg Bike Share Program.
Thank you, Jordan, questions for Jordan, from the council?
One, I'm excited to partner with OCCK, they're a great organization that I work with frequently, so I think they're great. Um, I'm intrigued about promoting Swedish heritage, how is that actually? What is, what is, is that the dollar horse on the bike? What is the?
Yeah, yeah, it's the dollar horse on the bike. And it's, it might be kind of, um, I don't know, it's, it's kind of a gimmick, but kind of not, I don't know. Like, it's this idea of like you personify the bike and you're, you're creating it as sort of like a collectible item, uh, and using the dollar horses to do that, as well as the Linsburg branding, so.
I didn't know if you were going with like Swede's Bike Alon, I wasn't quite sure where you were going with that.
I think that's probably true.
That's true.
Yeah.
Swede's Bike Alon, yeah. Yeah, that worked.
We were talking today, um, about how in many cities, in many larger cities, this doesn't work sometimes. But in a small city like ours that is easily bikeable and that you can get around and use the trails and, I mean, you, you could use it as your primary mode of transportation here. And in some places you cannot do that, and so it makes it very appealing for a community.
I've done it in Chicago and New York, it's great. Well, I mean, it's a good way to see the cities too, so.
Yeah.
I had a question in regards like maintenance on it. It says we're responsible for all maintenance and repairs of the stations and the bikes. Do we have any cap budget for that? Do they have any cap leminary?
So we are responsible for the stations, but the bikes themselves, we pay Movatic to do that. So Movatic, uh, I reached out today. I reached, I reached out today to, uh, the OCCK, the OCCK transportation director who I've been working with. Um, her name's Michelle. Long story short, she told me that they actually come and visit the bikes every two weeks and that you can report problems with the bikes at any time through the app. So if there's a cracked seat or if there's a tire that needs to be repaired or something, they can come out at any time. But through their, the way that they've operated with the communities that they're already working with is they come and check on the bikes every two weeks.
Do they charge a standard flat fee for that? Or do they just pass on what the actual image and issues are with that Movatic?
I believe that's part of the contract with Movatic. So Movatic, that's, that's what Blue Cross, Blue Shield and the city are paying for essentially. We're paying for them to run that program.
And then also mentioned that we have to cover insurance and stuff, what about like theft of them?
We have general liability insurance, uh, but the bike insurance is on Movatic. So, uh, our general liability insurance, uh, I reached out, uh, to Mike Dreyer, who is here in, in Canton. Um, the end rider for Jackcell add about two hundred dollars of additional costs to our general liability insurance annually.
Councilmember Peterson.
Just following up on, uh, Councilman Gallant's question on the, uh, maintenance. The way the contractor reads, I think it says that Linsburg will be responsible for all costs regarding bike maintenance.
There's no information.
Including new signage, so I would probably suggest clear that out before we sign this.
Sure, yeah, I definitely know the signage is on us and that's part of, that's part of the cost, the entry cost. My understanding is that, um, I guess in the contract it might say to the contractor, my understanding is that the bike maintenance is covered. But yeah, I can clear that.
We just want to cross that line out. And then, uh, just one other. And then as far as approving this, we're really, we're just approving it for one year. And there's no long term commitment other than the fact we poured concrete for some bike racks. But other than that, we're not locked into a multi-year agreement.
Yeah, that's correct. So this is an annual, uh, partnership with OCCK, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Um, so through the Can Cycle Program, we become what's called a spoke community, like a spoke in the wheel. That's how they kind of set that up. So we're one of the spokes and we have a committee, um, that's chaired by five members of the community. We're setting that up currently. Um, Marcus, uh, and Beth, uh, from city staff will be the two city representatives. And then we're looking for representatives from Bethany as well as, uh, potentially the hospital or U S D four hundred. But long story short, they, um, they're the committee that represents the program. If we need to pull out, uh, we can do that, uh, and relay with notice, uh, at any time. So we're, uh, yes, we're approving it for this year. And then going forward, there's going to be, every year there'll be a nine thousand nine hundred dollar fee to continue into the program. Blue Cross and Blue Shield will cover the other eighty percent, or excuse me, six thousand six hundred. Uh, after that, Blue Cross and Blue Shield will cover the rest. But if we don't have the grant monies or if we don't have it budgeted, uh, we can at that point pull out of the agreement. I anticipate that this can be covered, uh, with one of the, uh, three major community grants that, um, Chris and Ken are smoking out at Community Foundation.
How hard would it be to get with Movatic and get the actual? Cause I mean, it seems like this is a contract for that OCCK. And it seems like we're just missing the whole entire thing from them. How hard would it be to get the information from them on what we're agreeing to, what it's covering and so on?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think hard at all. Um, I mean, yeah, I can certainly reach out and give us something.
I'd feel a lot better if I could see that before I voted on spending six thousand dollars with them for that portion. And that seems to be the majority of our expense.
Concern on person.
The, uh, liability insurance here and such, you know, I guess one of the concerns I have is that people aren't necessarily going to be wearing helmets. That's a common element in accidents that happen and there are head injuries. Do, do we incur any liability for something that a person chooses not to wear a helmet?
Well, there's the release statement that every, you know, like in any app that you sign. It's in the user agreement, uh, you should be eighteen years or older and basically you're, you're consenting that this is generally biking, uh, assumes some sort of risk. Uh, I mean, you're taking that on. I suppose if somebody were to get injured, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm speculating a little bit here, but I'm sure they could probably name anybody they wanted. I don't anticipate that's likely to happen. Um, but that is why we have the general liability insurance for those potential issues. But also Movatic, uh, carries liability for the bikes as well. So I think that is, that's covered in the user agreement is my sense.
Okay.
And without seeing that myself, I can almost guarantee that's the case, in which case, um, they're, they're going to be sure to, to, um, indemnify down the chain, you voluntarily assume the risk. And again, without seeing it myself, um, I can't say for a hundred percent, but I'm ninety nine point nine percent that's how it be handled.
Okay. Further questions?
Just to follow up to that question, so I assume there's not any helmets provided or any options for that?
No.
And, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Well, just one more, so I know in the background information, there's, you know, it's included that there's other communities our size already doing this, some that are larger, Salina, that, you know, that are doing this. Um, have you had a chance to talk to any one from those communities to see how successful?
I was able to talk with Michelle about this and she said generally that the success of, of the communities depends on the location and also the kind of reliability of, of, uh, the communities themselves. So for example, this is something that Christie referenced in Salina, even though they have some painted bike lanes, the community itself is not super bike friendly, especially for people who aren't very confident riding bikes. Most people, and the data shows this for mobility studies and, and transit planning. Most people who ride bikes on the street won't do so unless they feel super, super safe. And in a community like Salina where you have a lot of cars and you don't have protected bike lanes, and also you have like sporadic bike lanes, uh, my sense is that it probably doesn't work as well, just as, just as a program. But what I've heard from Michelle was when we first got back to this, community like Minneapolis is really enjoying this. And so it's kind of like Bellevue, which is smaller, more bikeable, uh, and something that's maybe more of a unique amenity to the community and something that can be utilized more. So through Michelle, through our initial conversations, uh, she reflected to me that some of these smaller communities tend to have a better ridership and experience. But directly now I haven't spoken with Salina or Bellevue or Minneapolis.
Further questions, councilman?
Yeah, and I was going down the wrong track with, with Emol or Councilman Gallant's, uh, question. Cause this is the agreement with OCCK. When will we approve, or I assume we'll approve an agreement with, with the bike provider then? Does that come later or?
Well, that was my follow up question. I, the agreement is with OCCK and OCCK works with Movatic is what it looks to me like. So there is no separate agreement, I don't think, with Movatic. It's agreements with OCCK and they've just itemized that that's the portion of it that's associated with Movatic.
That's correct.
So then I guess my original, or question still is in play, but I'm clear enough to back that we are not responsible for the.
Yeah, I think that is a typo in the, in the, in the ordinance that does say in the bicycle section that the city's responsible. So yeah, that definitely needs to be fixed.
Should I do old three sixty there?
Oh, one other thing, just for the heck of it, since we're going down the road. We might as well get as much information as we can, even though it's kind of not complete. Um, but like, do they have lighting on them in case people rent them after hours? Is there limits to what timeframes they can rent them in?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, no, I think you are able to rent them at any time. And, uh, from my understanding, there are lights on the bike.
Cause I was gonna have concerns like public safety wise, especially like downtown, cause you're not supposed to ride the bike on the sidewalks, you know? And if they didn't have lighting, that would be a little interesting during some times of day. But I mean, if they're light lit up, well, I don't, I guess, we don't really have any problems right now.
The light is visible underneath the basket. It helps to expand it for all nice.
Counsel, we, um, you, you've raised some questions, there's two ways this could be handled. One, one would be to table this, um, allowing Jordan to get answers on lighting hours, maintenance, that type of thing, the contracts, and we could, you could vote on this in the first meeting in April. Or a second way to handle this would be to go ahead and, uh, make a motion with, you know, and understanding that, uh, Jordan will, um, take care of each of these issues sufficiently. But it's up to you. The only, the advantage to, uh, going this evening would, it's, Jordan has been trying to get this ready to go this spring. But a couple of week delay isn't going to.
Comfortable making a motion with the stipulation that we also have Movatic cover maintenance and the things that we discussed during this meeting. I'm comfortable making that motion if that's what you're seeking.
This is open comment, so, um, how do the rest of you feel like that?
We should address it.
But it should be okay with a motion that allows Jordan to do that? Either I can see your.
I drag it on. And I don't think we have to be real specific on that.
Jordan, are you sufficiently, um, you feel like you have the information to where if the motion was for you to handle this and make sure that everything is ready to go before we sign on the dotted line? Or what, what would your, what would your recommendation because of the questions?
Well, I mean, it could go either way, quite honestly. I mean, uh, I feel comfortable taking this forward, uh, and handling this issue and getting the information back to you as soon as possible. I can even put it in the Friday report or send it to Christie for it to be sent out. Um, but if you feel more comfortable the other way, again, two weeks is not too much time. Uh, the other benefit of doing it now, besides being going for the spring. The other benefit of doing it now, besides being going for the spring, is that May is National Bike Month. So, and there's a two-month lead, so there's this, this thing, like, if we can get it launched in May, there's some, there's some benefit to that. So whatever you're comfortable with, I'm fine with. I do feel fine taking this forward, but if you would rather hold off, I'm fine with whatever you prefer. Corey?
I'm okay if we just, if we could just say, re-strike that part about Linsburg being responsible for it. But if we are responsible for it, I'd kind of like to know what the average annual maintenance fee will be, or cost, you think it will be a fee? But I have no idea what that would run if that was indeed the case, if we did that.
Sounds like it's not a problem. Sounds like we're gonna take care of it.
Yeah, hopefully we will.
And I'll say, the reason why this is a bit of a surprise to me is because I reached out specifically to Michelle and asked, what are all the annual costs associated with this? And this was not one that she added on top. So by omission, like, my understanding was that this wasn't part of it, so, but I will clarify that. I'll just double check.
If, Counsel, if you're, if you are comfortable, I would entertain a motion that this be approved with the oversight of Jordan. If you prefer not to do that, we can table this and move on to April.
I'll make a motion that we adopt as presented with the amendment to the section on bicycle maintenance to strike that the city is responsible for that. Second.
There'll be a motion, the second questions on the motion? Okay, seeing no questions. Jordan, you're, you're understanding all this, obviously, so if you see a danger sign, then it would be not moved forward until you come back and revisit with the council. We'll ask our city clerk to call roll, please.
Councilmembers Vanderweig.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Gallant.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, Counsel. That's, I think, a good decision. Thank you, Jordan, for all of your work on this. Jordan, I assume that you, Jordan rides a Unavagabicycle. I assume you tried to get Unavagas?
Yes. Something I, I, you go to.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. We will move forward with, turning your attention to item D, insurance renewal. I'll call on David Hay, our finance director.
Hey, Counsel, Mayor. Before you is the renewal for insurance package for the city of Lisburg. That does include everything except for working, workman's comp insurance. This runs annually from April first to March thirty-first, and we broker these services out, so we're not tied to a specific company. So our current broker is Fuquay Insurance. Attached is the proposal for the upcoming term. Mike Dreyer is here, who's the agent for the local office, and he is available to answer any questions or explain changes in the cost of coverage. You guys will remember that we've talked about this before, that they were not able to break out specifically the broker fee. They had to include it in the premium for the last two years. The good news was, last year, they told us that this year they would be able to. And so, you'll see that that does really help us in being competitive, and also just knowing exactly what the broker fee is on that. One change to it is, the motion to approve at the bottom had the wrong amount in it. The amount should be one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars. And again, you'll see that's just a two percent increase year over year, which I find nice, because most, it seems like it's more than that.
What, what number are you saying?
At the very bottom, the amount shows one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and five in the motion.
Oh, in the motion, okay.
But it's actually one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five.
That's because that broker fee was pulled to help, and it should be included in the total.
The one sixteen just shows the difference of what the actual premium was without the broker fee, the agency fee in there.
Questions for David? Okay, thank you, thank you, David. Mike, do you want to make a comment?
Just on behalf of the agency.
Come on up, oh, sorry.
Just on behalf of the agency, thank you to you all. It is a lot of for the agency to be able to work with our local communities, and this relationship means a great deal to us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mike. Okay, Counsel, the recommendation is to approve the insurance proposal from Fuquay Insurance. And the correct amount is?
One hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There are a motion, a second, questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers Peterson.
Yes.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Gallant.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, Counsel. I'll call on our city administrator.
Thank you, we're at the halfway point in the agenda, and I just wanted to take a moment before Mike or possibly Josh leave. I just want to extend my thanks to those who provide services to us for taking time to come to meetings, to Mike, to Josh this evening. Last meeting, we had Wilson and Company engineers, KME in Midstates comes to speak often on Public Works. There are many others, but they sometimes drive long distances from Kansas City, from Wichita, from other locations. And so, I just wanted to thank them for the time. They sometimes come prepared to speak and never have to. So I appreciate them being here, and I know all of you do as well, so I just wanted to say thank you before any of them sneak out.
Thank you, Christine, thank you, as she said that, she's absolutely right, we appreciate it very much. Counsel, we will now turn our attention to item E, police department cameras, and again, call on our chief of police, Michael Davis.
Good evening again. You guys are getting the fourth bulletin here, aren't you? So I'm here talking about our body worn camera system. So we do have two systems, one's in car, another one's a body worn. I want to talk specifically to the body worn camera system. The Lisburg Police Department has both body and in-car cameras with warranties that are ending here in June of this year. Currently, the city has WatchGuard for body worn and in-car cameras, as well as evidence storage systems. WatchGuard was purchased a couple of years ago, and now it falls under the corporate umbrella of Motorola Solutions. Over the last couple of years, we've experienced multiple issues with the body worn and in-car cameras, along with software configuration issues. Some of the issues included the cameras not working, failures for the video footage to download, and system configurations making it difficult for staff to even check them out. So we had, we did have a warrant put in place. Unfortunately, due to poor customer service, lack of communication, extended delays in getting equipment fixed and returned, and even equipment reliability have caused us to reexamine and continue to do business with this company. For the last year or so, I've had Lieutenant Wolf researching ahead of this project, since he's our tech on in-cameras, and he's here to answer any questions you might have after this. And he's reached out to some of the industry leaders, Axon Enterprise, Motorola Solutions, and Sector for quotes on a multi-year plan to replace the body worn cameras starting this year, with the expectation of pledging out the remaining balance over multiple years and adding in car cameras in 2014. The companies, again, that we've looked at are Axon, Sector, and Motorola, and I do need to change one of the prices. Lieutenant Wolf was very diligent in staying on top of this project and found some opportunities for additional discounts. And Axon changed their quote because they were giving out a discount to all of those who were using their cameras. So the actual price that they quoted now is forty-five thousand, five hundred and seven and seventy cents, with an annual cost of nine thousand, one hundred and one fifty-three per year. That is below the quoted cost of Sector, which is forty-six thousand, three sixty-nine and eleven cents. The issue with Sector is if we try to do multi-year contract with them, the first-year startup is about double what we would get from Axon, and they would also add interest to the payments, so we'd really move the price up. Motorola Solutions provided two quotes. One is an in-house server to store video footage that came in at twenty-six thousand, seven fifty-five, and I'll talk a little bit more on that in a minute. Second quote, used a cloud-based storage, which is similar to what Axon and Sector's quote was, and that came in at forty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, with an annual cost of eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five from the start of year, and then seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy over the next four years. Now, getting into the obvious elephant of the room is the one quote by Motorola, which is significantly cheaper than the other three. By going with that one, it would be similar to what we currently have now. So we currently have an in-house server. Lieutenant Wolf spends, and I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say he spends hundreds of hours a year trying to keep the system up and running. And again, going back to all the things I previously said of the problems, he can address probably more eloquently than I can. He can discuss all the issues that we've run into. I mean, I've called all the way up to the vice president of the company and still gotten no relief for the issues that we've run into. So it's been a very frustrating couple of years dealing with this company. In 2023 budget, we did a budget amount of sixty-five hundred for WatchGuard mobile camera replacement, as well as forty-five additional, forty-five hundred additional for approved warranty, which gives us a total cost of eleven thousand for this year. What I want to do is look at using that money to get us a new camera system that is more reliable and have, being able to handle what we needed to do to ensure the safety of our officers, the safety of the community, and the safety of the city while offering a level of transparency that everybody expects in this day and age. In 2024, we also have nine thousand dollars of anticipated budget. And if you look at the previous CIP, we've budgeted every year for cost of cameras. And that would, with a minor change here and there, would cover basically what we're asking to do over the five years. So we've basically budgeted out for five years already. So with that, I'm going to make a request a motion to approve the purchase of nine new body worn cameras and an evidence storage system through Axon Enterprise in the amount of forty-five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents, with an initial payment of nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty-three cents for the fiscal year 2023. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Questions for the chief?
Do we have any feedback about Axon and their customer service?
Yes, actually, we, Lieutenant Wolf reached out, and he can come up here if he'd like and speak to that. We've talked to several cities who have expressed nothing but satisfaction with them. And the one quote I got, one comment I got from one of the chiefs I spoke to was, he goes, I don't know what it is, but they just work. They always work. And we have several companies. I was asked a couple, I think about a month ago, about a purchase we made, because we had two cameras go down, leaving us with only two body cameras. So nearby city is moving up to Axon, and they're selling all their WatchGuard stuff. So I bought a couple of those cameras to help get us to a position where we could at least have some coverage, because we don't know when the other ones will go down. And they jumped to Axon. A new city, or another city, is moving to a new camera system, and they're going with Axon. All I've heard from all the police departments I've talked to, and same from what I've heard from Lieutenant Wolf, is everybody's been extremely satisfied with not only the reliability of the product, but also the reliability from the customer service, end of it.
Further, Councilor, please?
I guess, I'll ask Counsel or you, I guess, our current vendors' lack of response, and clearly, they're not adhering to the warranty. Is there enough there that we can go after them for some compensation, since we have product we're paying for that we're not able to use?
I would leave that to your attorney, but I will say that when I called them, everything involved, we have supply chain issues. And that's what their delay, I mean, we're looking minimum, when we turned that last camera in, was it six months?
Yeah, six months.
So we were without a camera for six months. I asked for a loaner, I got all the way up to the vice president, we still never got it.
But we're paying for that, even though we don't have it.
We're not paying for a loaner, but we are paying for a warranty. So they'll fix it, but the extended amount of time it takes for them to get it back to us is not optimal.
And that was the frustration that I've dealt with for years, you know, just no response. And the warranty was a big one, we're paying for it, can't utilize it, so, very frustrating.
Matter of fact, the two cameras that went down, was it January or February?
January.
January, we called, and they said, we're not even working on the first that we got dating that dropped over yet. So we can't operate like that, the community expects us to have those cameras on. Courts expect it, and expect to have that evidence, and when we don't have cameras, I've gone out many times without a camera, because my staff has it, and we're doing these interactions, and we don't have that coverage.
Let's direct our city administrator to review that, to look into that, see if there's legal action that can be taken of some type, so.
And I'll just chime in very briefly, I was just gonna say, on that note, if there were to be a cause of action there, of course, it would depend on a lot of things, but ultimately, most likely, it would be handled by a civil litigator or civil litigation firm chosen by the city's insurance, litigation insurance provider. So if it were to come to that, that's kind of how that process would start.
Thank you. Other questions?
I just helped me out here, or is this a wholesale change out of all the cameras at one time? Or are you phasing the other system out, or?
The, the warranty ends in June.
Okay.
We would, with your passage of it tonight, if you chose to do so, we would notify the company tomorrow. We would have the cameras in place sometime in May, which gives us about a month to get, go through the training, get the memory, and then put them in play by the time the warranty for the other company is done. So it would be a full system change, and for body cameras only at this time. And then, we'll look at moving to the next stage in twenty, for the 2024 budget.
So for a period of time, you would be kind of working on two systems. The car cameras would be on the older system, and the new cameras would be the body cameras.
And we felt that the body cameras are probably the most important one we have, because that really handles the in-person connection, or, you know, filming of the situations that happen. The cars do catch some, but not nearly as much as the actual body camera on the off at the time of the interactions.
Good question.
Chief, are there any other benefits? Are they lighter, smaller, they're higher resolution?
More compact, and they stand their body a lot better.
Video that they produce, is it clean?
That's pretty, pretty equal, as far as the quality. We did do a trial with them, so we had hands-on with them for a couple of months, and absolutely loved every aspect of it.
Do they work for court stuff, getting those videos and getting?
Very well, yeah, you can send it through the web and just by emails.
Other cities in the area, have they transitioned to Axon?
In droves.
Thanks for your research.
If I can chime in on that as well, Axon is kind of the gold standard when it comes to this kind of stuff. Lots of large jurisdictions use Axon. If you've seen Body Cam footage on the news, it's probably Axon, so, if that helps at all.
We want to thank our tasers are Axon, and they will, they work together even.
So we can use the same storage system, it's all on the cloud. The taser information that we keep, so every time we download a taser, every time we test it, anytime it's ever used, uses the same storage system that we would be using for our cameras. So it's all one location for Scott, I'll tell them for anyone else to get access to, to send if we had to provide it to court, KBI, or anybody else.
I guess I'm not understanding, there's a camera.
Down to, while we're recording, with the body camera, I'll pull up my taser and turn it on. When I dock that, it's gonna all work together and say, if you can best not.
I'm there, you don't want to do it.
So it's, it's showing that the taser.
I'm standing out that you guys.
On your camera.
Even just turn it on, not actually activate, is that it also does that? No, it's funny, mount it, they work together.
Okay.
And it will actually even tell you GPS location of exactly where you are within a couple foot when you activate it.
And the Motorola?
Has not that.
WatchGuard has none of that, okay. That's, that's neat stuff.
I would say one thing, this is kind of a rarity for me on counsel to have an employee come and say, hey, we have this program, we sold you on this program, we've tried it, it's not working, we need to do something different, even though it's gonna cost some money. This is a good thing. If it ain't working, let's, oh, let's fix it, let's, let's make things right. This is not something for city staff to be scared of, or apprehensive about coming to us about. This is what we're here for.
Thank you. Further questions, Counsel? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Chief, thank you, Lieutenant. Appreciate you both being here. Who else, but that, Counsel, we have a recommendation for a motion to approve the purchase of nine new body worn cameras and evidence storage system from Axon Enterprises in the amount of forty-five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents, with an initial payment of nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty-three cents for fiscal year 2023 is our motion. with an initial payment of nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty-three cents for fiscal year 2023, is our motion.
Second.
The motion is second, questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll have our city clerk call roll, please.
Councilmembers Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Gallant.
Yes.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Bruce.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, motion passes, and thank you chief and lieutenant Wolf, we appreciate you. Turn our attention to item F, golf cart lease renewal, and we will recognize Beth Ferguson, our recreation director.
Excuse me. City of Lindesburg's golf course has six year, has ten, okay, let me start with silver. Six-year lease for ten RXV Elite lithium ion battery golf carts. This is good through May of 2025, this is a lease that we bring back every year to get renewed here. This is with Kansas Golf and Turf in Wichita, and these carts are energy efficient, guarantee thirty percent less energy used, up to a possibility of fifty percent. Along with this, we have a battery warranty of five years, and Kansas Golf and Turf cover the six-year batteries that are needed to replace lithium-ion batteries, improve the performance and longevity of our golf carts. These carts have been great so far, we have very few issues, and when we do, Kansas Golf and Turf come out very quickly to help us get them back up and going. None of those issues so far have been battery-related, and so that is also a big benefit. So I am here recommending a motion to approve ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents to Kansas Golf and Turf for the lease of ten golf carts for the Lindesburg Golf Course for the year of 2023.
Thank you, Beth, questions for Beth?
Do we know if the cart fees pay, the cart rental, does it pay for it? Do we assume we know? Okay.
I missed, what did you say?
It does.
Oh, good, thanks, Beth.
So this reduces until 2025, and the warranty's six years, whoa, is that gonna be the sixth year that we have them?
So, yes, the last year that we have it would be the sixth year.
Okay.
Yep.
Further questions, counsel? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have a recommendation for a motion to approve ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents to Kansas Golf and Turf for the lease of ten golf carts for the Lindesburg Municipal Golf Course for fiscal year 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second, questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll have our city clerk call roll, please.
Councilmembers Presley.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Gallant.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you counsel, thank you Roxy, and thank you Beth.
Beth, who just came from the soccer fields, so she's a winner today.
Well, maybe all her days.
Very winner today.
Okay, counsel, turn our attention to item G, purchasing policy revision. Call on our city administrator, Christine Markin.
Thank you, mayor. Our Lindesburg City Code, Division Four, Section Two dash two hundred, says that the duties and responsibilities of the city administrator include that I should exercise general supervision and control over all city purchases and expenditures in accordance with the budget and such policies as established by the city council. So the current policy that was approved by the council in 2018 outlines that the governing body would take no further action apart from approving expenditures over twenty-five hundred dollars, which means any amount below that, I can approve, any amount above twenty-five hundred comes to council. So because of inflation and the things that you've heard this evening about the cost of things going up, and I feel like every meeting for the last several months, I did some calculations, and since 2018, when that price was increased, that limit was increased from one thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars, the dollars had an average inflation rate of three point five five percent per year, producing a cumulative price increase of about nineteen percent, which means that today's prices are about one point two times higher than the average price five years ago. So a hundred dollars today is equal to about a hundred and six dollars next year, if that continues to hold. And then the Bureau of Labor Statistics anticipates that a hundred dollars today would be equivalent to about a hundred and sixteen dollars in 2028. So in looking backwards into what previous councils have done in terms of that spending limit and projecting forward as how costs might change over the years, and to streamline efficiencies at these meetings and for our staff in general, I am recommending this evening that that spending limit for the city administrator be raised. That amount is at your discretion. As I mentioned, the last time this was raised was in 2018, at that time, it went from one thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. My recommendation would be between thirty-five hundred dollars and five thousand, if that's at your discretion and your comfort level. This is not in any way to take any authority away from city council. You would still be reviewing payables and expenditures as part of each meeting. And you can trust that myself, David, our finance director, and all of our department heads review department budgets monthly. We scrutinize all expenditures, we have our eye on the budget, and we know, you know, when to pull back or when to bring something to you. So I'm leaving that up to you this evening. You'll notice that in the motion, I left the amount blank so that you could discuss that amongst yourselves. However, in the purchasing policy that I included, I did redline it. There is an additional change as well, that the governing body should review and approve all purchases of the amount you determine. I put five thousand dollars just so that there was something there, but we could certainly change that. And then also that three quotes on any item should be provided for any amount over twenty-five hundred dollars. That amount is currently fifteen hundred dollars. So that just allows us, you may remember at our last meeting, Noah brought forward something for twenty-five hundred and seventeen dollars. So there was that seventeen dollar difference, and he had to get three quotes for that. So this is just to give staff a little more room, and having to obtain those three quotes gives me a little bit more authority to approve those without having to go to that extra, extra work for them and time spent on something. So that one, I am recommending twenty-five hundred dollars, but the spending limit for my position would be at your discretion.
Questions for our city administrator?
So currently, the process is if there's a, you know, we'll just pretend a twenty-four hundred dollar bill for the chief, he will take that, bid, if he desires, and so on, then he sends it to you also, or you and David?
Typically, David and I both look at those. I, he is one of my direct reports, typically he and I talk about it, but then I'll always confer with David and ensure that he agrees.
I mean, 'cause that's one thing I've always kind of questioned, because people made it kind of seem to me like, back in the very beginning, like it's just the director gets to decide then, and I was kind of like, I always thought there was enough supervision over this that I was not as concerned as I think most people were, so I feel like going five thousand would be no issue at all. There's three people with their eyes on it.
Further questions, discussion?
I guess just to follow up again on that, so these items are already approved, or would be approved previously in our budgeting process?
You might have to rephrase my question.
Well, if you're gonna purchase something, we always have to budget for what we spend. So I'm assuming that they would already be budgeted.
Yes, yeah, so these items are budgeted, we still bring them to council if they're over twenty-five hundred dollars currently. So you'll notice there are many things in the CIP that you approve as part of the budget process. We still bring each of those items to you at regular council meetings. So you do approve them upfront, you know, you kind of see that. A lot of these are business as usual items, there are, you know, pieces of equipment and things that we do on an annual basis that are twenty-four hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred dollars, they're in the budget. You see them as part of that process, but then we still bring them to you.
Do we have any idea what's, is there a typical, what municipal needs to do?
I talked to several cities of our size and the scope of the city administrator or city manager position, depending on the city. The amount varies widely from twenty-five hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. So I can't tell you that there's any perfect amount, it seems like most are a little bit higher, but it's completely at your discretion and comfort level. It's not about, you know, giving me extra authority or anything like that. It's simply to streamline the efficiencies of your meetings, of our staff workflow, efficiency, all of that, so whatever you're comfortable with.
Then just lastly, since you did a great job of showing inflation, that percentage increase is quite a bit less than what's being proposed. So it's beyond inflation that we want to do this, we want more flexibility beyond inflation, I guess.
That would be up to you, so the thirty-five hundred would be on the lower end, that would be more in line with inflation. If you wanted to go higher to the five thousand, that would be, you know, depending on how you feel about it.
I feel like it's silly for us sometimes to have to vote on buying a water transfer pump or a VFD drive or something that is essential, and it gets held up when, when owners can just go, hey, I need this, I have to have it, here you go. Those items have been on the docket many, many times over the past couple of years because they've gotten very expensive. This would probably free up a lot of staff time. We talk a lot about spending staff time doing things that are unnecessary and efficiency, this would, I would plan it. Plus, everything's on, everything that we spend, everything that's under that threshold is on this report every time, correct? Yeah, I mean, there's no money being spent without us knowing.
Yeah, and I will tell you, you know, and I'm not going to make the case one or another, but administrator brought this forth for you to review, to look at. If you decided you're not ready to make any change, she can live with that. If you, this isn't about efficiency, and I also will tell you that I, that there have been times when our city administrators asked me about something specific that even, I believe, was under the limit, but I think we still ended up talking about it. If there's something that needs to be talked about, for transparency, I want to talk about. We don't want anything just going through without, that you should know about. Now, that's, you know, again, I'm not trying to talk one way or another, so it's whatever the council is comfortable with, but, and any amount.
I think it's great for to move up the three quotes to twenty-five hundred and to move your amount to five thousand, I think that makes sense for efficiency, for sure.
Would it be okay if we made a motion at this point, and see if it goes through or fails?
If, absolutely, any further direct questions for Christine? Okay, seeing no further questions, yes, I'd entertain a motion, you've got a recommendation that leaves that amount blank, so entertain.
I'll make the motion to set it to five thousand.
Do you need the quote on there too? Yes, please.
Let's, yeah, let's go ahead and do it, I have three quotes of about twenty-five hundred.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second questions on the motion. Okay, I think we would have our city clerk call roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Gallant.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, counsel, and I think that's an efficient item, and I think that safeguards are in place to make sure that we're reviewing what we should review. So thank you for that. Counsel, turn our attention to item eleven, and do we have executive session?
We do not.
That's good. And seeing no further. Is this for, or would we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved, that's my way.
All in favor, second probably saying no.
Hi.
No, you are adjourned, thank you, counsel.